Sorry, this is a salad store. You're in every bar.
In gravel. You wonder. Where's that pipe go?
They're walkers.
I'm the original. There were mushrooms down there too, among other things.
Bet there were.
Never tried. I don't know. I don't know if they were edible.
I was hoping, you know, if you want, what I did for the food today is I sent the person who made the clue, all the emails of the people with selfies, if you want that, I'll continue to do that. I thought it was fun.
Nice.
Yeah, but can we see all of them?
Sure. I can.
Why not make your day smile a little better?
Okay, I'm good with that. If you're all, unless you don't want to be flooded, because there were like ten or fifteen or.
I feel like it's fine. You can send them to me. They don't want them. They truly don't want them.
That's why I'm asking first.
Yeah.
And I don't just.
We'll limit the manager's report for this. We'll just send it to do it now.
I will send them to Jen.
I want the clues too, though.
I thought I copied the council on clues.
I don't think I got a clue.
Okay. All right, so.
Counsel doesn't have a clue.
All right, it's six o'clock and in fact, we will start our meeting. Okay, I'm calling this meeting order. The first item on our agenda, public comment. Uh, this is a chance to share with the council, anything that you would like for three minutes or less. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to discussion and review of parameters of the bond insurance fund for Fire Station Thirty-Two. All right. Money man, thank you.
We've talked a lot about this firehouse, the bonding mechanism. Um, this is the first step. So our plan is to get this approved on September twelfth. What it is, the parameter resolution just tells, the council tells us what's the maximum you're willing to go. So in the packet, it says thirteen million. Don't be alarmed by that. That's just a cap, okay? Uh, five percent interest, um, twenty-six years. They're all maximum parameters. So we're planning on borrowing twenty years. Hopefully around four point two percent. Um, and obviously less than thirteen million. So that there's two different resolutions, one for the MBA and one for the city, since it's a lease revenue bond from the MBA to the city. Technically, the MBA will own the, the building. They lease it to the city, we make payments.
That helps.
Yeah.
Deeds are.
So I have Mark Anderson on the, on the line as well, on, on Zoom, if we have questions for him, but this is just, uh, they're just drafts for for both the MBA and the, the city. I don't know if you guys have questions on that.
Parameters, questions or questions for Mark?
Yeah, I, I mean, it was an interesting read, but I don't think I have any specific questions.
It's pretty straightforward.
I would say it was a read.
Okay, so it seems like it was very clear in the packet, and that's great. That's the way it should be. So I'm going to go ahead and since we're not voting on this, we will move on and that'll be on our next, uh, voting session. Next is review and discussion of proposed memorandum of understanding between Syracuse City and the Syracuse Museum Foundation. Um, the memorandum is out. I will let any of you start with it. I'm sure that there will be some discussion. So
Yeah.
Who would like to start?
Can we put it up on the screen? Is there any way to share screen? Sorry, my battery was dead on my iPad before I left, so. Um, yeah. What's this? I don't know. I didn't bring it. Sorry.
Oh.
Was it nine percent?
No, it's a seat of privilege. There's a difference. Yeah, she could just be thrown on the screen. Right? They don't, can't say no.
What we need to.
Okay, we'll bring it up. But any comments before we start?
So I wanted to bring up that we've gone on here, uh, before, and I'm just going to check it here on sets. Um, we've got the foundation recording. Thank you. Except I didn't bring my iPad. Sorry, you guys.
I was shocked too.
Home to my kitchen.
I was, yeah, I was aghast.
I, I, yeah, I didn't have a chance to do it. Anyway, uh, we've got the foundation reporting to the city and, and it looks like it, they become an entity of the city. And so I would like to, to change that. So we've got, um, I'm giving a, a financing and funding represent, or you know, long range plan, and I don't think that that's anything the city needs to be involved in because the foundation runs on its own. Um, what we're dealing with here for the city's part, and everything is great on, on this, except for when we're talking about having the foundation say, here's what our, here's where, where our money is. We've also got that a little further down where we say, um, we want to have them present where they are financially and fundraising efforts. And let me see where it is. Sorry. Oh, the foundation will provide the city an annual report of the organization's financial standing at the end of each year. And I don't think that should be, uh, there's, there shouldn't be a bearing of the foundation on our city because we're providing, um, a curator and the land, but we, we shouldn't have them presenting any of that to us. And then also at the beginning where it says that they will give a long range plan of financing and funding and, and I think that, so those are the two things that I have concerns with.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Um, I don't think we, even the boards that we are in charge of, I don't think give an annual report to the council. Like, I don't think I've ever seen the an annual report from, say, the, what do you call it? The Arts Council.
No, but we don't supply a employee that we need to be accountable for. I'm not suggesting this is a wrong idea. I'm just saying that I think that the idea was that if we're giving a employee, we would want some kind of report on what the value of that employee is and what that person is impacting.
I think I'm okay. I, I think I would like to see a vision statement, like a kind of a, a museum vision that they did, like they've done in the past. I think those are great. I love seeing what, what the museum's doing, where they're going.
And that could be something the curator gives.
Yeah, I think I'm good with that. But yeah, I don't, I don't know.
For the financial aspect to be involved.
I thought we had talked about the curator giving an annual.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It would be the curator would give the.
Not really the board.
Yeah.
Similar to like the victim advocate. We, we fund that and then we get a report back on what they've contributed and what they've done.
Yeah. All those other things that it shows the curator does. So they, I think that's a great idea to have the curator say, here, here's what our goals are and our plans are for the year. And here's what we've, and at the end of the year, I'd love to hear, or you know, maybe once a year where they say, here's what we've done and here's what we plan to do going forward. And I think that's great. But I think anytime that we have our pause into anybody else's financial, you know, and, and I don't think we're trying to do anything wrong here, but I just think that that's crossing a line of, um, where they have a right to privacy on as a foundation. If they are apart from the museum, I don't think that we should be having them report to us.
Basically, it's like, like with our victim's advocate, it's a, this is what your money's paying for. This is what I'm doing. And this is why, how, where your values coming from.
Yeah, I think.
Like it's a, it's just
Yeah.
the museum curator thing. It's not.
Shouldn't be the foundation.
It's not about the foundation. It's a, let me sell myself to you, why you value me and why I'm doing good things for the city.
Maybe to accomplish that, we could just take some of that language and put it below, uh, the city is responsible for employing curator, that paragraph. And just describe some of those functions that we wanted the curator to report on, which was what we talked about last time.
Yeah.
Um, and then down under the foundation, maybe we could put, the foundation will support the curator in collecting this information in, in preparation for the annual report.
Yeah, like, like I would love to see the, the plans. Um, I'd like to see the, you know, the visitor status.
Visitors, where they're coming from.
Yeah.
Stuff you, you had in there last.
Yeah.
And we usually get a report.
We saw that some sort of language that talked about the five areas.
I wonder if we want to put a, a, a charging station at the museum that, where you can like pay to charge.
Let's give her a chance.
Thirty minutes where they can't do anything.
Okay, so, uh, Bree, Bree put this together. Let's give her a chance to comment on the purpose.
So I didn't really put much, um, in the way of the curator position because that's going to be our employee. So we'll be able to set the vulnerable responsibilities for the curator. Um, uh, we can remove the reporting, the financial thing. That's just more of a when the city is giving money to a five oh one C three, um, you know, we, that's what we usually, um, include in there. And just, so the city council's aware. Um, there's not any kind of like conditional language in here and there's no like if this, if that, it's just outlining like roles and responsibilities and what we anticipate each of the parties are going to be doing. And I did have a conversation with Dean and they have, um, some hesitation in the, the term in allowing, um, either parties to request termination with thirty days. They'd like to enter thirty days notice and then the MOU would extend out to the end of the year. Um, but again, there's, there's no kind, there's nothing in here about breaching the contract or anything like that. It's just settings for.
Right.
What we.
State, I'm not sure how that, there's any conditions you can enforce extension of a contract.
Yeah, we just, um, this is just what we think they're going to be doing and what they can expect that we'll be doing. Uh, but yeah, we can remove those. And I did actually have a question about, um, whether you wanted.
Voting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I do believe that the liaison should be a voting.
I think so too, yeah. Well, and that, that was kind of what we came a, away with after the last meeting to say if we are contributing the, the property and the, the land and the curator, then, then we, if we have a person, a liaison position from the city council can be a voting person on the board, then I think that that covers our assets quite well.
I like how you worded that.
I know. I didn't even realize.
Um, what, I guess you also had wanted a feedback on hours of operation, correct? So I guess what do you guys think as far as hours of operation? I would like sometime on, um, Saturday. Just for those people that can't go, but like right now I looked up the hours and I think it's from like eight to five or something. Was it that long? Let's see. Um, two to five. It's two to five each day.
Let me just say, I'm not opposed to this idea, but as a history perspective, we as a council voted at least twice that I can think of that if we were going to provide a curator, we were going to expect extended hours.
Mm-hmm.
There's no legal obligation for them to fulfill that part, and they didn't. So if you have to be prepared that there either has to be a clause that says if you don't, then we're not going to fulfill this obligation, or it's just a waste of burn.
Can that be something that we do along with just our curator, rather than have it be part of the MOU? Because I don't, once again, we come away with, well, we are asking volunteers to be there and we can't require volunteers to be there at certain hours, but we can require our curator to be working certain hours. And so could we have that be part of our, our employment with the curator to say, these are the hours that even if you don't have employees, we'd like it open, or you know, or this is how many hours you need to be on location and things like that, rather than asking volunteers and requiring volunteerism.
For me, it was the, the hours determine the need for a full-time versus a part-time curator.
So that's why I say that we would say that the curator would have to be, have the doors open a certain amount of time. And maybe that would be up to her to, or him, to make sure that, that have.
I mean, we literally just made the curator full-time now for a reason.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
Well, they've been full-time for a year.
But yeah.
Each time they've done that, it's been on the condition that they would open longer and that never happened. So i- if, if the justification for being full-time was that there would be increased hours, but there's not going to be increased hours, then justification isn't there anymore.
So I know that the hours that they have listed are the hours that they're open, but if someone's there, they'll still open the museum. Like they put the phone number on there so you can call it. Like you just have to dial phone number. And they're, but they're in there rearranging things and doing things and resetting things up. So they're still working, but it keeps people from just walking right in and picking something up and walk, because they might be in the other building, things like that. So they have reasons to keep the doors locked, but all they gotta do is call. So the fact that you didn't call is on you.
And I'll take that, but the point is.
It's so they're there, but they are there is what I'm saying. They're there. You just gotta call. They may have the doors locked because it's, they have security aspects and reasons too.
I, I guess I'm saying eighty percent of the people would be like, ah, it's closed. I'm going to go to something else.
Maybe make the please call this number.
Oh.
Sign big.
Call this number.
Like, because it's not that big. It's like right side.
No, really. I mean it.
You could underline.
We're here somewhere probably, you know?
Full print.
Yeah.
At Times Roman.
I was just going to say, the, the curator, going back to the last, the last comment. The curator, um, was a full-time position, but it was divided. It was doing the communication piece, which we hired in.
So now that has position.
So yeah, I, I guess that's what I'm saying is, uh, if you don't want to set hours in this, you need at least set a minimum number of hours for to, to determine whether it's a full-time or a part-time position. And you can work around.
That's actually wise to say that the, the obligation of the city is determined by the commitment of the foundation to be open. So it would be flexible according to what is, what happens.
What, what you can do.
So you, with the curator, you're basically saying if there's no volunteers there at the time, that curator has to stay in that one building. Because if they leave that one building, that to go to the other building, then they have to lock that door.
Yeah.
So that's why it's not that they're not there working. They're just.
Maybe the curator is, uh, only gives, it gives, um, looking for a word here, tours with small groups, um, meaning I'm trying, I don't know, I don't want to say exclusive tours or limited tours, I guess would be the word. So that they can lock a building, go to the other one, show that building and come, and lock it and come back on certain days, if you want to require the curator to be there, like on a weekend.
I, I'm just saying that right now the museum is open for twelve hours a week. And that does not require a full-time curator.
That doesn't require forty hour a week person, you know?
Can we, can we hear?
I would like to.
So I, I would like to know what they are, what their need is for a full-time curator and if it merits, and if they would be amenable to having us uh, have any control over hours.
Okay, so I'll recognize Dean to answer those two questions.
Thank you. Uh, I talked to Cresta. We've already put it down. Uh, the curator will work Tuesday through Friday, nine hours a day. We'll go winter hours or summer hours. So it gives us thirty-six hours. And then on Saturday, every Saturday, we'll be open from ten until two.
That's perfect.
So we've got hours and I've talked to Cresta. As we interviewed people, that's what we're going to present to them. Uh, four days a week, nine hours, winter hours, summer hours.
And then, and. Yeah. So then, I, I, just to clarify, so is that, um, that's the hours the curator will work? Does that also coincide with the hours of using it's open?
Well, the museum will be open. Our problem again is we have eighty-year-old volunteers. And having a volun, and if we have a hundred volunteers, we could absolutely be open. The way we are right now is if it's a single lady in there, I don't want to leave the door unlocked for anybody to walk in. So if they knock, they call, we open the door, we do make the tour. If we know they're coming, we have volunteers that come that's ten o'clock at night. We have volunteers that come eight in the morning. We have volunteers that come on Saturdays. So the museum will be open. She'll just be working. It won't be open for tours forty hours a week, but the museum will be open forty hours a week and doing all the other things that.
You can take yourself on a tour through the museum.
Oh, you can just walk through.
Yes. And so we're planning right now, uh, this Saturday's been a hard one, but I talked to the volunteers and we're going to rotate volunteers, uh, on Saturdays, one time a month or something like that, or once every two months, that you'll be there to help with tours on Saturday. So yes, our intent is to open it as much as humanly possible without having to call the police to come help.
Um, one thing I did notice that, um, in one of the boards was, um, volunteer. I would love to try and get as many youth volunteers as we can to learn at you guys' feet.
And I thank you for bringing that up. Uh, we talked about that before. Uh, we're going to go after the youth, the high schools and see if we get, that's where we're really going to get our volunteers for Saturday. Yes, to bring them in on Saturdays to help. Having with tours.
That's great.
Cause yeah, I, I think uh, like you said, there's a lot of, of amazing history that is, like you said, eighty years old, that we'd love to get that history taught to the youth. Like, I don't know if my kids understand a lot of the stuff that's happening in Syracuse. I try and tell them about stuff that I know, but.
They don't know about the toilet that's.
They don't know about the toilet and the gravel of.
That's right.
If it doesn't get passed on and the museum is conditional on that knowledge, then it would die its own death and we don't want that. So so we, we has to get passed on.
Great. So thank you for that.
One other comment I made. And if we interview this time, we're going to work very, very hard on somebody that wants to work forty hours a week. You know, there's employees that want to work forty hours a week and there's employees that have struggled with forty hours a week. And you don't really know that until you get them hired.
Great. Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
So, uh, any other concerns in the MOU?
No, I thought other than that, I thought it pretty detailed, outlined responsibility and I'm, I'm good with that.
So Bree, are you clear on what they're asking to be adjusted and is that doable within the next hour?
Do you have questions?
Because.
Yeah, I've made the changes right here.
Okay.
Um, so I just, um, did you have any comment about the term of the, it being ten years and a thirty-day notice? Um, in relation to Dean.
Since I think it's really enforceable in here, I don't think it really matters to me.
Well, with the MOU, I don't.
He's in a museum is kind of like hoping to God you're going to get it all done at a time, you know?
Yeah.
I feel like you probably, that's just, I don't know. I know, I know, so even if it's not like a forceful thing, like you gotta give them a little more time than that. That's a long, that's not enough time to get everything up and out of a museum if they were to terminate other.
That would just, I mean, it would be up for probably renegotiation because we wouldn't just let nothing happen, right? So if we, if.
Well, we wouldn't.
Yeah.
But in that many years from now, whoever's sitting here.
Probably none of us will still be sitting.
So, you know, I would say at least give them some sort of safety net that's a little bit longer and days and thirty.
How do you feel about the thirty-day notice and then it extends till the end of year?
That's a good January.
Because that's not enforceable. Uh, that, that concerns me because what if it's in January and it extends to the end of the year? That I think that that's kind of too, uh.
Then just make it a longer.
Like ninety days.
Ninety days.
Yeah, I would be like ninety days or, yeah, or twenty days.
Let's just do ninety days.
Ninety, ninety seems like a good amount, three months, yeah.
Here in ninety days.
Even a giant farm in ninety days.
Any other points to change?
We're just not going to break this contract or this MOU anyway.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So we, we just. On there that you change it so they are not present to us there. The, the foundation doesn't have to present to us what their finances are at any point. And, but we will expect the curator to give us a, a general, and that'll be something else. So, okay.
And the curator may need support from the foundation to gather the information to.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I anticipate it will be a cooperative.
Yes.
Really should.
Um, it will be, but.
Okay, so we'll come back to this in our next meeting. Um, I'm going to move us on to review and discussion of proposed updates of the Syracuse City personal policy and procedures manual. And invite.
This was another document.
But another document. I just had one that stood out to me and I wondered if there was a reason for it.
So we just had a couple of changes to this. You guys have any questions?
There was just one actually that I did have, and it was the seven days, uh, ask, add a job offer cannot be made any sooner than seven days after posting. Why is that? What if we have a real quick need and that's on a.
We have to advertise.
Yeah.
There is a, there is a fair.
So is that what we have? Is, that's why I was wondering, is there a reason that we have a seven-day thing?
I think it would be considered unfair if you were to say, well, I advertised at this hour and then I'm going to hire somebody and all of you who didn't see it within those thirty minutes are out.
Maybe we have a minimum.
Yeah, we, so we have a minimum.
We usually force jobs for a timeframe. There are some that we do until fill, but we still wait the seven days just to make sure we have enough applicants.
We do have another part in the policy that specifically says the job posting has to be open for at least seven days. So we didn't want that to conflict if somebody's trying to do a job.
And they could say, I opened it, but I offered it to him the first day, but it was open for seven days, even though it was filled. Okay, that's good. Thanks for that clarifying clarification.
Yeah, what I thought was interesting was the ability to rehire someone.
Yeah, because they hadn't met the skill set or something.
No, they, when he got the skill set. So we couldn't have hired them in the past?
I do think we want to have fair hiring practices that we, we make sure we give people proper.
They were terminated.
And I.
Yeah, so if, if we terminate them for not having the skills, if they go get the skills, we can rehire them.
Well, they, they won't call it terminated for a cause anymore.
This was actually, some of these parts were interesting. Most of them were just or designees, but.
The one that I thought was a little interesting was the abuse of sick time.
Oh, yeah, it seemed like you had quite a bit going on with that, going on.
So it's obviously still very discretionary though, right? Because it said, it said examples of abusive sick time was, um, ninety-six hours or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I was like, somebody gets pretty sick, eight days is not really that, or whatever that is, twelve days, it's not that out of hand.
I think policies like that just cover the city in the event that it's obvious.
It's just not, it's not. If it's broken up and more like individual events versus, yeah, you could have that all in one event, I guess, um. But yeah.
Yeah, our policy before was pretty generalized. And so some of the department heads felt like, um, it was too general. It was like, well, what is abuse? What I consider abuse might be different than like the employer or somebody else. And so we were just trying to
Mm-hmm.
Be a little more specific.
Okay. Then when you have instances of, um, another one that stuck out to me was a little bit interesting was when you have instances of um, employee conduct violations, the supervisor can instigate a investigation. It says, or department head. Is that just because we're so small that, because I mean, never in a million years would I allow a supervisor to start a ethics investigation? Is that just because of the organization's?
Well, I think that some of our people are remote enough with the departments that it would be their supervisor that would be aware and not the department head, because they work, interact every day with their supervisor and may not see their department head, but occasionally.
Yeah, I'm just used to going directly to HR and your supervisor supposed to completely stay out of it so that they don't muddy the investigation and create challenges for HR to have a clean investigation.
Yeah, um.
Speaking from a lot of experience.
And I'm trying to think exactly what part you're, you're talking about. Typically for like
Four hundred pages.
Lower level are, I guess, lower misconduct would be investigated by the, the supervisor, but if it's like harassment or something, I guess more egregious, then typically HR would be.
Yeah, especially if it gets to the level of we're talking probation or suspension or termination. Okay. So it's like somebody didn't change the toilet paper roll. It's like, who's been there?
You're out.
Yeah.
That's supervisor, that's S D K.
Check that thing down.
Oh, you know, you're written, Bill.
No, you don't.
Okay, so.
Just bypass.
Any others?
No, I think that was it. I I.
So you're okay if we put this on the voting, uh, session, or, and this could be, uh, consent if you agree.
Okay, I.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, we'll put this on consent. Let's move to our planning items. We have quite a few. And thank you, Shawna, for coming after hours. Thank you. Okay, our first item is proposed amendment to the land lease agreement for cell, cell towers with. Okay, our first item is proposed amendment to the land lease agreement for cell cell towers with Crown Castle. We have a couple of them and uh Noah, would you just give us a basic overview of the changes?
Uh, yes, so we have a cell tower in Founder's Park and a cell tower in Rock Creek Park. You've probably seen them at the base of the tower, there's a little fenced in area. What they're trying to do is they wanna add a generator. It won't fit in the fenced in area, so they gotta expand the area. And since it takes up more square footage, it's only fair that they pay more. And expand the leaks. So we have those two documents that include those.
How often does the generator run? How loud is it? Okay, I'll just check.
So this is. Thing that it would kind of help us in in case of emergency, keep our communication.
Okay with that, ours operation matters.
Is it three hundred and fifty bucks and five hundred for the two?
Yeah, yeah, one area is a little bit bigger than the other.
Is that consistent with the square footage across the the same square footage cost for each of them?
It's not gonna affect.
A huge change.
It's a little bit more, yeah.
So right now, if the power goes out, the cell tower shuts down? I don't think so.
Yes, what is?
I I was kind of confused by that because right now the cell towers don't go down in a power outage. So are these?
Why? Yeah.
Their battery? They have a giant UPS down there.
If it's something.
I honestly don't know. I could.
Why do they need it? What's the purpose?
That was my understanding is that they need it for power. Power outages.
I mean, obviously, I think this is great. I it it'll help us in our in an emergency. So I have no problem with this at all. I I'm more as an engineer. I like to nerd out on.
Long as that's what it's for is in an emergency.
I expect that when you have cell phone coverage, you have a mesh of different towers around. And so you may still have cell phone coverage because of those other towers.
And even if one is down, the others will pick it up.
You don't have to read engineering.
Do want to make sure um for Jen's point that we do clarify that these will only be running in the event of a power outage.
So we'll seek clarification before voting. This obviously will not be a consent item. Let's move on. Our recommendation from the planning commission to amend section ten thirty dot forty. Uh, city code pertaining to control of. Animal control and kennel regulations. It's mostly about the requirements that are being placed on us from the county. Um, and being in compliance with that. Does anybody have any specific questions? Because knowing that it's counting almost mandatory at this point. Okay, so could we put that on consent?
Yes.
Yes, for me.
Okay. So we'll put that on consent. Item number three, proposed amendments to section five dot thirty or five. Of the city code pertaining to mobile business regulations. Noah, brief us on this really quickly.
Okay, so uh. The legislature in the twenty twenty-three session expanded the definitions for mobile businesses. Like, in the past, there was there's focus on food trucks and there's all these food trucks, we don't have to do with them. Regulatory speaking, uh, but now they're expanding that to include things like.
Dog grooming.
Dog grooming, knife sharpening, you know, all these, million different things. We're just reflecting the updated legislation.
I had no problem with any of this.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll put that on the consent agenda. Item number four, recommendation for planning commission to amend section ten dot thirty dot forty. Pertaining to exterior building design elements. Uh, this again is initiated by the legislature. Noah, would you?
Yes, uh, they, again, twenty twenty-three, they. The a new law came into place that says that cities cannot regulate things like brick, rock, stone, or how big front porch is, or whether or not. You have to have a. Side facing garage, rear facing garage. We actually do have a few things.
That's all, is it only out of one? Single family or do.
There are some exceptions. I included the the law in the packet, uh, so it's like you're, the city's exchanging density. Higher density, we can still require that it's be nicer or meet certain architectural requirement, but for the run of the mill. Single family home or duplex, they threw a duplex. Uh, that's kind of like, hey, cities, hands off, we're trying to do some more housing here.
So does this leave us open to all siding homes?
Yes.
We can't do anything about it.
It leaves you open to plywood homes.
Okay, how, so when we're like.
Concern about this, I recently.
Yeah, this cannot go on consent for the record.
Yeah, I recently went through uh Ogden, the older section of Ogden up on Harrison in that area. And it it's just really obvious that the better designed homes, brick homes. They they last, they're they're old, but they don't look like uh trash. But the ones that have had, you know, aluminum siding and some of the older methods of building, they look like they should be torn down. Now, my concern is for the longevity of the city. We don't want to be approving things today. Because it's affordable, but will have to be torn down sooner than later, because that will be blight in our city. So. I think. That there is a way to deal with this that has been proposed and that is that you tighten up your zones a little bit and in order to get. The density, you just require development agreements, so because I don't think it's bad.
Which is what we've done in the past. We've always had development agreements that allow us to say, so does this wipe out all development?
No, no, it doesn't.
Agreements.
Development agreements supersede this. This uh, what this wipes out is the blanket. Our city always requires.
Okay.
In in every case, you would have to say only in certain cases.
Yeah, if they wanna just come in and build according to the zone. That's there. Then you can't, you can't require any of these. These requirements, so. Only if they get more dense.
So I think that, and you know, we've changed that some to include like Hardy Board, but Hardy Board's been proven to be a solid source, so I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with saying anything because. Anything like Jordan said, can be plywood and tar paper on it. And they say, hey, it works today. You know, and then in five years, you have to tear that building apart because it didn't last.
I think that's to meet the international building.
All right, so, but this does come to the point that there are. Lots of really cheap building methods that are available, but. Do not, they come right out, even in the advertisement with some of these contractors. I have been to the shows and they had heard, look, this is not planned to to live more than ten years, but for short term housing, this is great. And I'm like, I'm, why would a city be interested in short? I understand refugee camps, I do not understand a city.
So, what did we say our options are?
So we have to agree with the legislature pretty much, but what we can do is in the future, put an item on where we. Look at our zones and maybe adjust them so that we would encourage more development agreements.
When does this have to be uh changed by?
This was already in a. So we we just have not been.
Or maybe it's July.
We've just not been requiring this, if it's.
So our hands are tied at this moment on the.
I think this does prompt us to say we need to look at future action.
Well, I know we've always talked in the past, when when legislature has threatened to do this, we've said, well, we keep our development agreements in place. But it does become an issue if we have one here and one there.
Yeah.
But it does tend to be that the that they're the higher density that want to do more homes and they would need. A development agreement with us in order to do that. So that's a hand we can play, so.
Okay, so we'll, this will obviously have to come up for discussion at the next meeting, but I think we've got a handle on it. Uh, next one would be a proposed amendment to city or Syracuse City Code section ten dot seventy-five dot forty pertaining to side yard setbacks. For planned residential developments, these are PRDs. This is spurred by a lot of complaints from the one. Area that we changed the setbacks so that there's not sufficient room on the ha- on the side of the development. To not be in your neighbor's yard.
What if your neighbor eats sugar? You're gonna pass out the window.
That's, I don't think that's the issue. The issue. Seems to be, I can't get my neighbor to move so that I can get by my own side yard. And so when. This has been going on for about a year and a half. I get regular calls about this, so we put it back to the planning commission. Planning commission recommended that we. Move this at least to the distance that a vehicle could get by. To alleviate this complaint.
I like this.
I actually did too. I know that we went uh in the past, we were looking at trying to give them the most house that we could. And I think that, you know, that kind of thing you can look at and reconsider and and so. Even though it changes maybe how much they can have, I think that it's. I I support this.
Okay. Need at least one more to go forward.
I'm good.
So are we good to put this on consent? It's like everybody, okay. We'll put this on consent. All right, number six, discussion review ordinance regulating the use of recreational vehicles. Trailers and dwelling as dwelling units. I think this has come up lately in our city. Um, I think it's been going on for a a long time in a very. Uh, limited fashion, but it seems to be getting more extensive. Um, so I think we have to decide. What is acceptable? Um. You know, can you put a trailer, can you put five trailers and become a rental property in your backyard? Because I don't think that that's. Uh, good for the city.
Code wouldn't allow that either, but it doesn't mean it's not happening.
Yeah, so how do we deal with this one? Folks?
Well, I think the most important thing is we've got to have something in there because at this point, we've had some complaints and we have nothing that we can do about it. And they've gone through several levels of what can we do, but nobody has had teeth. To to say this is what you can do, even going to the county level and the health department has been an issue. So I think our city has to put something on there. I especially wanted to, I I think the, maybe what we can do, because if it's their own property. I do like the idea of saying unless there's a home on it, you can't. You 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 can't be on that property within the city limits because they. That would mean it's not improved. Where are they getting their utilities? Where are they getting their power? They're stealing it from someone else. And so that's an issue. So maybe we can in uh institute that ordinance that if there is no house or or approval or improvement improvements. On that property. And then the other one is maybe there can be a limit of how long they can camp out.
That's where I wanted to go.
Yeah, I was I was thinking that too, you know, if you have limited habitation, then you would allow somebody to park in your driveways at vacation.
If my in-laws are coming, I want them to stay in the driveway.
Here's thing, what if you have a. House full, but you have another child that wants to move home. And you let them sleep out in the camper, but they have, they use the house, the kitchen, the bathroom, all that stuff. They just use it as somewhere to sleep. How does that fall into it? Cause if there's not space for him in your house, are you really gonna turn your kid away? But they can sleep out in a trailer out in the back, parked back behind the fence.
My neighbors have their in-laws come and stay in their camping trailer. I couldn't.
And I mean, like, and how long? I don't know, I would let my kids stay there.
But but I think there had to be iteration where uh at some point, it's like, okay, this is getting a little ridiculous.
I think there is a safety issue. I think that maybe we regulate it considering uh. Power has to be uh. Has, for, you know, you can do extension cords for a short period of time, but I don't think that that's a safe thing to do for a year. I think that sewage is certainly an issue. If you you can, you can store things in your camper for a while, but it's gotta be dumped at an accessible waste station.
But that's if they're not using that, they're like using the bathroom in the house, things like that.
So the regulation would be in regards to, it can only be dumped at a professional station and must be dumped regularly. So if it's not being used, it doesn't have to be flushed, you know, I mean, does that be? But that would be some of the things, Noah.
So uh, some of the concerns brought up are already addressed in the ordinance. Um, so it already says you. You can't dump sewage and you, if you're. The problem, uh, I think lies in. The uh camping and. So the order clearly says you can't, you can't live in a trailer. And you can't rent your trailer out. But it's a little bit fuzzy when it comes to. Like the scenario that you propose, like if, if it's your own family.
Yeah.
It's in your own yard and it's your own property. How long can you camp out there? But I. But like I said, these these trailers, um, we we don't necessarily have a lot of. Tornadoes and high winds, but they're not affixed permanently to the ground. Right? They're not efficient and sometimes they're leaky and they don't have permanent connections to utilities. They're not dwellings. They're recreational vehicles. They're. That you register with the DMV and you pull.
On long term, they're not paying impact fees.
And our ordinance is pretty clear. It's like a dwelling is not a trailer. And so sometimes we get that confused thinking that, okay, we can treat them like a accessory dwelling. But they're just, they're just not. They don't meet building code. There's, there's a long list of reasons why it's not the best thing for the city. For people to be living in these things long term.
A lot of them have a single entrance, so if there is a fire.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's really not a good scenario too, but I understand, you know, the freedom of your own property and things like that. So that's where I think that's the legislative question is like, how long do you let somebody live in this subpar situation? And it's hard to enforce sometimes too, because. If they really are renting it for profit to somebody and then it's the code enforcement shows up. It's like, oh yeah, that's my brother. Or, oh yeah, like that's. I'm camping.
And there's. Um, eviction implications too that we can't really. Get involved in, um, right?
You evict someone from not a dwelling?
Well, they're gonna argue, right? Cause they probably, well, I don't know if they have lease agreements or not. Situations, right? But that's another contract that we'd be interfering with too, so. Those kinds of things, it's just, it's easier to just. Say no.
Yeah. I'm okay, like, like I said, I I think if someone's coming and they're visiting. Thirty days. I'm, I'm good with that. I mean, I think thirty days is probably a little long, but.
Circumstances that could be, you know, that, but I think that's really generous. You say thirty days is usual, but as you were saying, there are no impact fees being. Being paid and when you get into an extended length of time sitting in someone's driveway, you really are receiving all the benefits of.
Is that thirty consecutive days or thirty days total in a twelve month period? What? I mean, I let my kids sleep out in our camp trailer in our driveway when we park there. Yeah, they like that sleepover. So what if I let them sleep in my camp trailer more than thirty days out of a year?
I don't think anyone's gonna complain about that.
Well, but would I be in violation of the code? That code, I I I don't want the city telling me I can't let my kids sleep in my camp trailer.
Yeah.
That's parked on my RV pad.
I think consecutive would probably be the operative.
Yeah.
Term here because, yeah, I don't think you're gonna let your kids stay thirty days. Play the devil's advocate. As soon as you say, okay, it's just consecutive days, if they move it for a day. Does that restart the clock?
Well, then maybe we have to say thirty consecutive days or and then give a limit per year.
Okay.
I like ninety today. It's a solid number, I feel like.
But that gives us three months that they could move for a day and come back and I think that's.
I think, I think it's the conditions of, I think it's the conditions of the use more than anything. It's the utilities. And it's the conditions that the the place is kept in, so. Uh, and the impact on the city. So I think that more we need to focus on what we can regulate, which would be. You have to have permanent utilities if you're.
Yeah.
If you're in it, if you occupy more than seven days consecutive, you have to have. Better established utilities.
Don't we already say that it has to be registered?
That would be another thing I think we could control.
They have to be a license in a, you know, a reg, you know, vehicle registration. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And even trailers.
Behind your, like, gate? You gonna go look, officer?
Uh, if if I get a complaint from a neighbor, I think you can.
Yeah, you can.
You can.
Man, I feel like we're getting so invasive.
But then, I and I agree, I know what you're saying, but then I think that that is part of what we have to do is land. But then, I, and I agree, I know what you're saying, but then I think that that is part of what we have to do is land use.
No, I know, I agree, but I'm just like, how invasive in the land is to.
Well, and, and you're right.
Based off of something that recent events have recently happened.
Oh, I can't.
Thank you, officer.
Okay, so we're gonna bring.
Yeah.
There's, I think there's different levels is what we're understanding is like, you can't just go looking for a problem without any cause, but. If there were cause reported.
Again, it's him. I mean, if this is. If, if the only place that I could see it, let's say is from this first yard and you have like a six foot fence wrapped around the house. And the officer can't see over a six foot fence without bringing something into it. You can't do that.
So we need a taller officer?
Right, that's.
About as tall as they get.
To my house and he said, hey, a neighbor complained about something in your backyard, we need to come check it out and say.
Most would say you're worse.
Complaining, they're direct next to whatever the violation. They're tired of looking at it. So they say, hey, come see this. If you stand on their back patio, you'll see it. Now that's, that's perfectly legal.
Okay. So it seems to me we need a little more work on this.
Well, nebulous.
Do we have?
A stricter of legal trou- troubles.
Do we have some clear ideas of what we need to navigate? Or do we need, what questions we need to answer in order to come back with at least something?
This is one of those things that it's like. As long as you don't bring a lot of attention to yourself, like.
No one's.
But you can't write it like that. Like you can't be like, there's gray line, you know?
You have to have something to enforce when.
And then they're like, oh, but they're doing it too. Yeah, but they're not creating a disturbance in the city with it. You are.
I'd say the very first thing is to say if there is no home on that property. Then we know they're taking someone else's power slash sewage.
Was a home on that property.
But just going forward, even if it's not that one, I think that that's an important indicator that they are not paying for. For the impact.
Yeah.
So I'd say if there's no improvement and no home on that lot, that, that can't happen.
Well, I was reading through the code. It said there had to be a desert, you had to park it on improved.
You do have to.
Parking, it gets confusing because the rules for parking a trailer are different than what you consider a dwelling. And so you can actually, if you own property. You could park your trailer on your own property, whether or not it has a house on it or not, but you just can't let the weeds get all crazy and really.
I thought we actually, it had to be on a prepared hard surface, like either gravel, rock or cement.
It's in your backyard or they just parked, parked in the backyard. I think that's where the. Grab, where the weeds need to be bowed down, but often review that if it's on a separate parcel, maybe that's when you have the. Pad that, or gravel or whatever it is.
For the sake of discussion, I just had a thought and I have no idea if this is legal or not. So I'm asking advice. But if we, uh. Could we have something that says at X point, you're considered a residence? Or you're considered a resident and then you would have to pay impact fees?
So treated like an accessory dwelling?
Then you just validate that.
Then you're turning it into an accessory dwelling.
I understand, but the point would be that you would have to pay all the impacts. If you were to do that, which could be for this, could require them to do things that would be prohibited of making a trailer.
Living in it longer than thirty days, you have to prepare the surface. You have to put in foundation under any impact fees. Hook up all utilities.
Has to be tied down for tornado.
Why are we excessive?
You could make it excessive that you actually, we have to prepare it like a house. If you are going to live in it like a house.
Tiny homes and then we're gonna have to go down that road. If you really wanna do that.
It's all, it's all in the, in the realm of this, you know, alternative housing options, especially with the affordability crisis. But I think is what I'm hearing and tell me if you think this is the, the right path is, we have accessory dwelling, we have rules for that. We have dwellings, of course, we have rules for that and when we can charge impact fees and we can't charge impact fees if it's not a. Building permit. You don't get a building permit for a trailer. But I think is what we're talking about is like urban camping. It's like. You know, it's short-term camping on your own property and we're talking about a time limit of, you know, thirty days or. Or, you know, we can work something different. So you have a consecutive amount and then total calendar to your maximum amount. And if you're going to participate in urban camping for longer than, I don't know, whatever, you've gotta have. X, Y, or you shall not do X, Y, Z sewage generators. This is the standard.
Are there urban camping, uh, ordinances that other cities already have? We don't have to.
That's actually a great idea to differentiate between hanging out in your RV and camping.
Yeah, so like, think about it though, the time wise, like if you have a kid and their family. Is coming to visit for the summer or your parents are coming to visit for the summer, that's like ninety days are gonna be at your house. So when we consider the timeframe of it, like it would be, I would think need to be definitely longer than thirty days.
But that would be different than urban camping, right? Urban camping would be outdoors on property or, or tenting or.
Anything that's not strapped in.
I noticed there's like a homeless guy maybe sleeping out over here.
I think he's sleeping under the.
Good time to maybe just tackle.
Of urban camping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't mean to get us off into that tangent, but.
Well, I think that, you know, we live in a different world now. We have to kind of be.
World, it's just lumped himself into the city.
It's just morphed into.
Yeah, I, I guess I would like to understand. I would like to tighten up some of our existing stuff to, for clarity's sake. And then, yeah, I do think we should look into an urban camping. Specific section that lays guidelines on, on what.
I'm not sure.
Sure we do something that definitely protects people when they're, the family, you know, when family.
I totally agree.
We are, again, in Utah, people have like twelve kids and then you come home to visit.
Okay, so I think one of the problems.
You could do something for.
Still, I mean, you gotta, people bought their homes so their family could come and spend time with them there. Like. That's the whole point of having a family home. We still need to accommodate for that and not just prevent people from breaking laws.
You could have them register or something like that.
Yeah, we can do it like a temporary permit. If they're gonna be there longer than thirty days, they have to come in and show what they're doing.
I think for y'all, I've got one child.
I think that's a great idea, cause that kind of protects the city and protects the police from having to say. I have to come in and, and get you out of here.
Cause you can force them to come in and register or I would have to, you know.
And then, I guess, so, so. To, to dig into what Jen's saying, uh, at what point is, is there to, are there too many RVs in this yard?
Yeah, I would, I would say probably maybe one.
Okay, I, 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 I was kinda where I was going. You were saying, you were saying twelve kids and I, I was, I was seeing RVs lined up across the driveway.
Look, I've only got one. I'm trying to help y'all. Family matters and all that.
Yeah, so I, I agree. I think there should be a limit to how many you can have on any given lot.
No, how many you have with someone in there?
So I could only have one. I can only have one camping trailer. People have larger lots and homes and driveways and garages and they might store more than one camping trailer on it. I don't.
I guess that, that actually goes into, I guess more into the, the RV storage. Are you okay with someone's acre renting out the, the, their. The back half of their acre and put like.
Wasn't that in here?
Well, that's just a storage. That's different. That's a business. You're running a, a storage business. So that's not personally.
Would actually have to be permitted and that's not permitted in a single family zone, like outdoor storage is.
So it sounds to me like I'm saying, yeah, you only get one.
My, if I have two, I don't, but if, if somebody has two personal RV trailers. And they wanna store them in their driveway and they have space to do that.
I was just asking a question.
No, that's what I'm saying. Are, are you, are you saying they can't have two if it's just their personal trailers that they're storing on their.
I think we're just talking about what people are sleeping in at the time. Like if they're sleeping in it, like staying in it. Yeah. Not if it's all covered, like I've got a neighbor's got like three of them, but they're all covered.
Do we have any regulations? Camping trailers can be stored on a residential?
No, but we might need to look at that because I know there are guys out there. They're like, hey, I got a big yard. Oh, pay me fifty dollars a month.
I, I, I know of one guy who owns an empty lot. And he is actively charging neighbors' rent to park their trailers on an empty lot. It's just sitting on a regular road.
But an empty lot grows.
In a single family zone. See that?
So you just tricked your neighbor.
I've actually had a complaint about it, so you know, I will be talking.
Okay, yeah, let us know.
All right, so let me get back to the core of the issue. Staff, do you think you have enough direction to bring us something to look at next? Meeting. That doesn't mean we're to a voting point, but do we have enough direction to?
Let's take a stab at it.
You got a hand behind you.
Yes, sir.
I know, I realize you're feeling a very thorny issue here. As you start for, you know, uh, seeing how you're gonna put this in place. I would ask that there be some thought on the backend for how this is actually going to be enforced. From my department and from Noah's because we're gonna be the ones getting it. So as you look at it from examples, can you say? You're not allowed to do something thirty days. What's to prove that thirty days has actually happened? What's to prove that thirty days, if we said consecutive days, how do I know that? They like legitimately, all of this stuff falls back on the city. We're the ones that have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that this went. That trailer one day. Go in and say, you know, look, we have, theoretically, we have to prove that they are not related. And therefore not families. I know this is free, this is free world, but you know, I look at it like my guys are gonna come in and go.
What do you want us to do?
Thirty days, well, thirty days, does it start from the complaint that, does it start from the first time? Now what do you have neighbors recording as far as what thirty days is? There are a lot of very, you know, this sort of code enforcement stuff in general gets tricky, but there are a lot of real thorny things that go along with it.
I'm hoping some other cities already figured this out.
Probably not.
Well, I think they've only figured it out until there's a twist in it. So you gotta work this out. Anyway, I think that we've got enough to start. So let's. Let's do go there. Um, we have a couple of communications issues. First is, you're asking to change our, our logo for the Halloween season.
Love it.
And my question is, will we do this for other seasons?
I would love this. This is adorable. Let's get festive.
And I want, we need banners.
There is potential for other seasons, but we wanna start small, see how it goes, maintain the branding to it. Um, really we would take this logo, replace it on our social media, use it on our players, use it on the upcoming events that we have throughout most of October.
For the sake of, do we have anybody before I say this, for the sake of those, uh. Yeah, just in case somebody watches the recording, could we pull it up or? I mean, I've seen it, counts it, seen it. It's in the packet that.
Makes me smile.
I loved it. It is adorable.
I, I actually was thinking that exact same. Give this stencil to Cresta, we can put it into the, uh, what do we call that?
It looks like a little dog. Like I wanted to go pet it when I saw it out in the field.
All right, so. Discussion, I, I, I think in general.
Great message.
Yeah, I, I like the idea. I'm okay if we expand on this and do it at other times.
We could put a Santa's hat on the end of something.
I'd be okay if we adopted one to specific park uses if we had them like, you know.
Yeah, I thi- I think if there's a message of we're interactive with our community, our citizens, we, we know what. You enjoy and, and you know, everybody loves holidays and. I, you know, for years we would paint our windows of our business and when we would go too long, it felt blighted. And we said, oh, you have to keep up on things constantly. And so I think it kinda shows that we're really connected if we change it out for seasons or even just events or something. But I, I think that it's, yeah, a couple of months for this and then you can go into Christmas and.
We say six weeks or you wanna go eight weeks with this?
Listen, well, everybody starts decorating about then, right?
All right, I'm just saying that sometimes they will say you imposed on. Or on Thanksgiving by decorating for Christmas before Thanksgiving happened. Are we imposing on anything if we go to?
Stuff out at Walmart. So they said it.
I follow a couple of Haunter, uh, groups on Facebook and they've been buying stuff since like. July, like just so you know, Home Depot.
Those are the people.
Is sold out of a lot of their decorations.
All right, so let me throw this out. Here's why, okay? There i- is a later discussion item and we're not gonna go into it in depth. It's just a couple ahead. But the state has been pushing really for resurgence to recognize the US Constitution in September. Does this detract from us trying to put an emphasis on the constitution? Because we're also putting an emphasis on Halloween during September. Or, uh, this is what my question is based on.
September for constitution. Okay, so, and then, and then it's Halloween.
I'm just saying, uh, this is why. It's not because I have a personal.
I think that we can get into where every month has several things that are impacted, you know, that we wrap it around it. But I think that there are a few holidays that are recognizable to all or at least connect with the vast majority. And I think that. Constitution, it is wonderful, but it's kind of a brand new idea that we're gonna start to focus on it in September and I don't think that it detracts.
And, and even if in October, I don't think this logo would detract from, I know October is also breast cancer awareness month. And I don't feel like Halloween detracts from, from breast cancer.
Social media wise, if you did like the constitution stuff for like first two weeks of September, then all of a sudden bam, Halloween, like.
I'm okay with that. But you know, this makes a good point too, that if you refresh often, it makes you look more involved than. If you refresh until it looks blighted. So. So I would be more in favor of. Let's, let's pick our moments because maybe we do a red, white and blue logo for the first half of September or. We could.
What was your, your?
Yeah, I think that gives us adequate time.
I'd be good with that too.
Yeah, eighteenth and then eighteenth, that's Halloween. What's good, we're negotiating.
Wanna maximize everything.
Still do a, a, a fall Thanksgiving in November because I. You know, I don't decorate till Chris, until.
We do need the Halloween bands.
For Halloween such as the pumpkin walk, such as everything that's gonna go in the magazines, which might be. Prior to that date.
But maybe for the daily things like social media, we could give it a chance to, to.
But I, I guess, do we wanna talk about banners? I know that we're not doing a budget opening or anything, but I, I do think with the pumpkin walk. And all of the different Halloween type activities we have, the haunted houses. I do think it would be worthwhile to get, you know, some orange banners with this logo on it that we put up on the.
Let me throw out two things, cause there's, there's lots of cities do this and it's, and I'm not opposed to it at all. I, I. What would the expenses really are not the banners as much as just the manpower to change them out. Because that does, that's a lot more than the cost of the actual banners.
Takes like a day, doesn't it? Not that long.
Oh yeah, but it's still, you know, yeah, okay. Uh, anyway, uh, you got a couple of people changing banners. You gotta pay for the banners and the more they're changed. More chance they wear out.
I, I do think we shouldn't do this excessively. We shouldn't have a banner for every single month.
I agree.
But I think Halloween Syracuse kind of is a big deal in the Halloween area.
And we're trying to make it a bigger deal in the Halloween area. So.
Wanna own Halloween.
The eighteenth, we change banners and we. The eighteenth, we change banners and we have till then to get some banners out for.
Place, we were looking for a place, so we did find a graphics place that was very reasonable, those West Point signs and they're beautiful.
Okay, it would be a future budget opening.
It would, it would be between two to four thousand dollars to do whole banners. Um, and it is about two to three weeks out to get those done once they're designed and. And you do wanna use specific weather appropriate materials. We would wanna make sure what. A lot of them will have a warrant to armor, so we'll wanna look at that.
And they could be reused another year.
When you're coming, when you're designing the banner, I'm like. I need some ghosts and pumpkins on there too.
Okay.
But I think banners for the Halloween would be a good investment just because it kinda shows that the city is like. I don't think anybody else does Halloween banners.
Okay, so let me try to check. Need a budget opening to approve the spend, but could we in this meeting, uh, consent to get the process started?
Yeah, you can give us the nod to.
Alright, so that's what I. We have sufficient to go to get started. It will be a future budget opening to approve these. Alright, let's go to discussion proposed. Social media conditions and terms from city accounts. Kara, you wanna guide us for the, first start with this, what reason we have to have something like this?
Yes, as you all know, if you're on social media, there has been an uptick in spam and we are seeing a lot of spam. Regarding, you know, third party links that are coming through malware that's being targeted towards individuals. So after going through some of these trainings, and this is something I've instituted at the other organizations I've worked with for a long time because then have something to point back to, to say. You know, you broke the guideline here and this is why this post was removed. It's very rare, it would be very rare on yours, except for probably the third party links and malware links would be something that would need to be consistently removed. I don't know if you guys were following a lot of the Heritage Day's posts that went up. Anything that had a link to buy something on it, you were seeing repetitive users trying to sell people on. Buying tickets for things that were not real and we didn't have a mechanism to be able to remove those. Sorry, so this will allow us to have a mechanism to say, okay, this post was here, this doesn't fit within this. It's not First Amendment protected and so we can remove that and we can protect our citizens. And it really is just limiting the things without those First Amendment protections. We really wanna stay viewpoint neutral. Were you, I mean.
But you're not allowed to say, just don't be a jerk. Cuz obscenity, defamation, actual threats, being a jerk, illegal activity.
Protected under free speech in the constitution. It's unfortunate, but it is.
We can't do anything that would chill being a jerk.
So you will.
Understand.
Profanity is protected. Obscenity is not. So that's where you're gonna see.
I know the difference. I'll tell you that.
I swear a lot, that's profanity, but I'm not obscene, that's the difference.
And most of the time you'll never see obscene. Materials on social media because there are, are much better protections for it.
I'm pretty sure some of the words people say literally is a obscene thing.
Okay, so I think this has been vetted by other organizations. This is not just ours originally, so. Um, are we okay putting this on consent for next agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the next one would be discuss, our discussion of September Constitution commemoration activities. And I'll just start with this because this has been really big across the whole county. People have been reaching out to the mayors and saying, would your city please do something to participate? It is a governor's initiative, uh, originally. Um, just a little background, uh, Constitution Day falls on a Sunday this year, seven, seventeenth. Um, I'm open to all ideas of what we do, but I do think we should do. Uh, a minimum of some things because. You know, it's, there's nothing wrong with, we, we are a government built by the constitution, so.
Change our social media banner to red, white and blue constitution. They sent us all a book. Did you guys get the book? The year, they, they've sent it to me twice already. I'm like, you guys thought I didn't read the first one?
So I like the book.
No, that's great.
We tried to think of something that would be easy to implement this year, something that would showcase Syracuse. Um, we really like the theme of kind of, you know, Sweet Land of Liberty, Syracuse. We can showcase that. Um, and then each year we can look at what's happening and potentially build on it. So this is a good introduction for this year. And then kind of going back in the history and doing some social media posts regarding Syracuse history in relation to.
What would you think if we put out a youth essay contest?
Love that.
And it's judged after Constitution Day, so with school just starting. There's kids that are interested in things like that. If we put it out to all the schools, I don't know what response we'd get. We may be small, maybe large.
Depends on the prizes.
If there was a prize, if the, if the, well, the prize, there was. Decent enough prize, you probably get somebody worth, you know, jumping in on it.
So one of. The things when a city does like any sort of youth contests. The best idea is just to reach out to that teacher of like the high school or the junior high and see if they'll offer it for extra credit. And kids love extra credit, teachers love easy reasons to do it.
Are we okay to sponsor it?
Think so. I think, you know, I grew up with the, the reflections contest.
Oh, yeah.
A really big deal and my kids did too and they always entered. They looked forward to it and I think that as you get older, you don't have. Quite as much of that and you know, of course, this can be open to all kids, but I think that we might see a resurgence. I do, I'm all right now.
Well, but I do think that.
Great to start them young.
Yeah, are we, so we're good with that? If we put something together and, okay?
You should have lunch with the, they should have lunch with the mayor, one of the little kids, with the younger ones, that'd be one of the prizes with the city mayor.
And one month past the rec center.
That could be a prize, yeah.
One month past the rec center.
For the whole family, because mom would have to go.
Aside from all of that, I think that what people is gonna get kids to enter is some cash.
Well, yeah.
I mean, and I think what we, should we set the, should we set prize money like we have other contests? Maybe one fifty for the winner and seventy-five for second place or? I mean, that gives fifty for third.
I still feel like we should have lunch for them.
I will.
And, but I do think it's wonderful, because a lot of them don't care about money, they care about recognition.
Yes.
Wall would be. They all, everyone cares about money. But there are some that will really be.
It's today that, that pays for something, so that would be, alright. I will put that together as well.
Great.
Um, and get that out. Uh, any other ideas that would be quick and easy?
I think those two are.
I have to get that first one or the essay out immediately, but I can do that. I have contacts with the principals, so.
And would you wanna do the same prize money for the photography contest if you opted to do it?
The only issue I have with that is the last couple of times we've done photography contests. We have really sketchy entries. I mean, there'd be like one or two really qualified entries and then there'd be like a lot of snapshots of frag mighty and.
Takes a lot more effort. Especially with the cameras you have on cell phones right now.
Maybe it's whoever wins the photography contest gets their picture up in the rec center or, you know. Somewhere and they get the recognition for it.
Also, I just, not that I'm against. Not that it's not as important, but. Keep in mind that the Connections Magazine offers photo contests every year and the prize money's only twenty-five bucks, so. When we offered, the year that we offered like a hundred bucks prize, we didn't even have enough entries. Um, until like the night before.
So wait, the legal folks are going over on the other side of the building, right? Is that what's up? It's relevant, I promise. So they're gonna have their own, if they do a photo contest for like the constitution. And the prize could be, yeah, to put it up in the legal area, like right up in the front, so. We could print it real big and put it up there. So for the whole year, it would be like in the front office of the legal.
And that could change it.
In the, in this building, in this building. Kick the people out? No, isn't. That's alright, we got legal somewhere.
And we'll get their picture somewhere.
Yeah, but we print out like the first place and get it, you know. Just so we have to look at it.
I think we beat this one to death, so let's move on.
So do both.
We're doing both.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we're doing both and then, um, fraud assessment. Thank you, Kara.
You're amazing. Amazing.
We'll record on you.
All the time, we, we talked about how great you're, you're amazing. You should see, but I was looking around.
Alright, so this is the third or fourth year we've, uh, done this self-assessment. You guys made Seth mad.
He may be having a health issue.
Yeah, third or fourth year, we're required to do this as part of our audit each year. And our score is at a low risk of three fifty-five and it has not changed since last year. Any questions on that?
Good job.
Great.
Thank you, Steve.
Hey, Steve.
Hey, discussion regarding creation of an ordinance providing for immediate intervention. In situations that pose extreme risk to persons in the city. Um, this is an interesting one because I think on the one hand we need this and on the other, whenever you talk about extreme risk, emergency action is always. The actionable.
Yeah, what, what is there? There was nothing in the packet on this.
So here's the deal is, there was an allegation that there was an immediate and. Health risk in the city and then there's the question of, does that cause? Do we need ordinances for anything that would be an immediate risk or are we covered? Just by taking action because this is an obvious risk. So that's the, that's why this is a question to pose and it couldn't be just the health risk. It could be also. Um, somebody is creating a, uh, well, I guess it's health that's, you know, threat to persons. Um, with a condition that they've created.
Isn't there always like an emergency action agency of some sort for each?
That's the question is, are there things that don't? It's been alleged that the city does not have sufficient teeth to take action in an emergency situation. So the question is, do we or do we not? And if, do we need to enhance it in any situation?
Without violating their rights. Let's not violate anybody's rights in the process.
Okay, yeah, I don't. Without any real tangible examples other than what was, what was determined not to be an actual emergency, I couldn't. Speculate on what we would need to develop. I mean, for what I don't know. I think as a city, uh, I think we have the obligation to investigate. And if there is a problem, we need to figure out how to, or emergency take out solutions. I know, but I, I feel like most everything we have some type of coverage for.
Yeah.
I think we've seen in the past some real abuse of that power when it comes to state and federal and what's happened, even county levels. Where it got to end city. Where it really has gotten out of hand and there becomes a, we supersede your right to respond otherwise, so. I'm always reticent to do anything that's gonna become the newest law.
Anything we are to develop with such an ambiguous.
Like who are we? Right?
Like, I, I, I would be, I would be nervous.
Forgive me for putting this on, but the question had to be asked.
But at the same time, like if it was a health risk, you would call the health department and they would send somebody out. If it was like a, a safety risk, you would call the police department and they would send somebody out and do a welfare check. We are not qualified to overstep someone's rights and say. This is a safety hazard because we said so, so now you need to, like, we pay people a lot of money for that.
Okay, so fair question. I'm gonna bring a few staffers in to respond. Um, and I know I'm putting you on the spot. Can you see anything you're not covered on that would be an emergency? And, and that's okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Every answer is correct.
Well, I mean, it's a giant. Yeah, I mean, being on the spot, but I guess the biggest thing I would say is it really doesn't matter what ordinance it is that you try and write with it, it can't. It can't violate what's constitution. It doesn't matter, you know, you can't put it on there and say, look, our officers are allowed to go in your house, whatever. Now, if it's appropriate, that's not gonna work regardless.
Could you, I mean, it's okay to say you think you're covered with anything that would be an immediate threat.
Uh, yes, I mean, I'm gonna tell you off the top of my head.
Fair enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Fair enough. Noah, because you, your court of code enforcement, can you see anything that we're not covered on that could be an immediate threat that we may have to consider?
No, if it's a code enforcement issue, it's, you know, something that shouldn't be an emergency, it should be. Or we're, we're researching a situation and we're trying to bring in compliance, maybe assessing it.
And there are, um. Situations where our building officials can close things to occupancy like. Other departments can.
Or like red tag something.
Right, so we do have that in the international building code too, if there's a dangerous or defective. So we do have it in the international.
Robert, you're next. You're good. And I, I know this might seem weird, but Cresta, I'm gonna throw it out to you too. Do you see anything that? You're not covered on that could be an immediate threat with parks and rec that? We'd have to close something down or make, take immediate action that you don't think you are, you're covered for?
Was that directed at me, Mayor?
Yes.
No, I don't see anything that, that you need to add. I can't see it, but I, I don't see anything.
No, it's okay. This is fine. The question had to come forward. When we were challenged as a city. You don't have the, you don't have sufficient teeth to cover us other citizens.
I hope she feels.
Question comes forward and, and I, I feel better that we addressed it in a public meeting, so.
Yeah, no, yeah.
But that was a scenario when there, where there was found to be allegations that weren't correct anyway, and so.
And they were false, and yeah, and it's, again, if. It's very tricky to invade on somebody like that without stepping on their personal rights and I am a firm believer in personal rights.
It, it's all good. I, I appreciate you hearing the question.
Yes. Good to address it.
So I'm going to adjourn us from this part of the meeting and call to order a short business meeting. Where we have one item on the agenda and that is to authorize the mayor to execute the MOU that we talked about in the first meeting. Are there any further questions? Please make the adjustments that were requested. Is there any concerns?
No, not at all.
Normally, we would not do this.
But it catches me off guard all the time. It gets bad. The whole thing, like they should have cut it off.
Okay, so we're talking about the MOU.
Two thirty, you chimed in too.
Right?
Yes. Stop me from wanting to bring us back.
Is it brought up yet?
I'm not blaming anyone. I too am guilty.
I think we're just waiting for it to come up. You know, she became a princess.
How did they squeeze nine seasons out of that wretched show?
What are we missing?
You know, like you could see here the same stuff just hanging out in the, this area right here during the day. Up until like season two, you could hear the same stuff. Up until like season two, you could hear the same stuff right here. And they all dress the same too, very dapper, like across the board.
And that's, it's a lawyer show.
Oh, yeah, it's attorney.
Either emergency or manics or. Yeah, manics from the sixties and seventies. Bed every night is he's got to watch something from the sixties and seventies to calm down. Yeah, I don't even. One out of twelve.
Oh, my gosh.
I know, I've got like a sunrise alarm clock.
It's there, let's focus.
How about you read the, okay, read the parts that we were.
So I changed the vote, the city council member to be a, a voting member of the foundation. Um, in the. Fourth paragraph, under the foundation responsibilities, I removed the long range plan. And I just included, you would like a vision for goals to accomplish. Um, museum and cultural center vision, I guess. Um, and then I removed the requirement for the. Financial. Um, documentation to be provided to the city. And then in the bottom, I put that they would, um, work with the curator director to keep the museum open and operating for at least forty hours.
So I actually don't think it needs to be, oh, cause I do agree that a curator needs some prep time at both the beginning and the end of the day to do stuff. I don't think the museum has to be open forty hours. Yeah, but, but I do think it should be somewhere in the thirty hour range operating and the other ten hours, the curator is doing stuff. Right now, we're only getting twelve hours, so if we can get it up to thirty, that would be more than double what it is at the moment.
Once again, though, that comes back to our, our conversation with the curator, not the foundation. It doesn't, that's not part of the MOU.
They wanna separate the hourly. They're just saying hours the curator is working, they're not wanting to tie any hours to operation.
I do think there's a contingency of we provide this based on certain specifications.
I would like the MOU to outline at least a minimum level of service.
Well, then.
I would just say open for thirty hours. I don't, I don't get it to be open and operating. I feel like the same thing to me.
Uh, not if you've been hung out there for a while, they would be very different.
Well, you can employ the curator to do different hours. I think the key, the key is, is that if we're gonna send them, I think the point was being made is if we're going to send them there for full time. Then they actually has to be open for a minimum period of time. That is more than, it has, it has to be equivalent to the time that we're paying the.
So I'm gonna say that, then open for at least thirty hours per week.
Yeah, but that, that controls the foundation, not the curator, right?
If we're gonna, I think it, I think the point that's being made is if they're only open twelve hours.
They don't need a curator.
They don't need a full-time curator. If they're open for, if they were sending a full-time curator, it has to justify by enough hours. Of operation.
Okay, so now I have a question that this might help. If they, could they, if they change their hours on the little sticker thing, could they still keep the door locked, says knock, ring the doorbell, we'll come open it? Cause that's, it really is a safety thing. I mean, if you look at the statistics, the people who end up in museums, it's kind of a safety concern, especially if you have a female curator. But yeah, ring for service would be.
And that could make it so that they don't have to be there to give personal tours, but the museum can be. I think that, that makes it so that we haven't just held the foundation volunteers to say. You have to be here at the, in these hours, but if the curator knows and we say this, the, the building itself needs to be. Have access to be open, someone needs to be there so that they can open the door if somebody comes by.
Way to deal with this would be to say that, um. The hours of operation dictates the level of curator that we supply. That's harder because you don't ever want to change an employee you're hiring for a position. But it does put the burden back on if you can't maintain these hours and you choose to do different, then our obligation becomes different.
Well, I think we stick with the full time and I think that as they're interviewing and who else is helping with the interview process. I, I think whoever's involved in the interview process says, we need the door, we need it accessible for thirty hours per week. And that can be, and. To get somebody in that position that knows what's required of them, but also to understand that thirty hours that door has to be able to be opened. And it can just be the curator there.
But, but yeah, like put a doorbell on if, if, cause I agree that. If she's there and there's nothing, nothing going on, I would like the curator to be able to go around, work on exhibits, do things. Without, without someone walking in and being like, I happen to know that we have a very expensive book in that museum, and I, I'd hate to see someone be like.
I think they're, well, this would, nevermind, I'm thinking this can be curator issue because. We have to make sure they have a, they have clear direction that does not include freedom to do your homework or.
Well, yeah, no, they, they got enough projects over there.
Yeah, but I, I do think that, yeah, I, I would like to have some level of, of hours in there, and I think we got that, so I'm good.
So we don't say that we have, they, the foundation is presenting thing at the beginning or end. They'll focus on that contributions, okay, they're financially responsible for all funds that happen or are collected or donated to the foundation. And they will make these, manage these funds in accordance, yeah, that's great. And they don't have to report to us, and they don't have to say here's where we stand, but we'll know because the curator, I mean, we won't know where their finances.
Well, I do wanna specify one thing though, that if. The museum foundation.
After we're all gone, you know.
But that probably doesn't have to be included.
Wanna make sure that we're not like saying we'll never talk to them.
So for thirty hours, because thinking ahead, when we're no longer here, we'll say, but it says. Doorbell, well, you're not open, well, we're accessible.
Thinking ahead too, though, they could change that. None of us are here, they could always say, I want that to be.
But, but the, the hours on the door need to list the thirty hours. Or more.
And then just say.
Are we there?
Yes.
Yes.
So I need a motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the MOU for the museum.
All in favor? Any opposed? Ordinance passes, we are about to adjourn. One small item to take care of. Uh, we have engaged in some corporate team building activities. And personal welfare, and, uh, to build up that excitement, I sent out an email this morning as part of that. There will be a bake-off held on the thirtieth. Okay, and on the thirtieth, there were six categories given in an email this morning. This die will determine which category is this year's category for baking. Who do we get to roll the die, Brody?
Give it to the only person who raised their.
Can you pass that down to Jordan?
Hoping for the tarts.
I thought that was a good category.
Wait, what numbers of tarts?
This year's baking contest will be tarts.